I'd like to call the -- if everyone could take their seats, please. I'd like to call the August 24th Board Meeting to order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here. Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here. Dr. Salagi, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
...........................
First thing on our agenda is an action item. Appoint Julie Kalavitz to the Board of Education. Dr. Schuler, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Okay, prior to this meeting, one of our things is that before taking their seat, the new board member needs to take the oath of office. And Mrs. Kalavitz read that to me right before the meeting. So she has taken her oath of office. So I'm going to move and ask for a second to appoint Julie Kalavitz to fill the vacant seat on the Board of Education.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Welcome, Mrs. Kalavitz. Please come join us at the table. Okay, I need -- next is the public hearing. I need for a motion and a second to open the public hearing on the 2022-2023 budget.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Long, second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Long? Yes.
Miss Booton? Yes.
Miss Bladner?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon? Yes. Miss Kalavitz?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson? Yes. Miss Grant?
Yes. Okay, there is nobody who has signed up for a public comment on the hearing. So I need -- unless, Dr. Schuler, you have anything you want to add? Okay, I need an approval to close the public hearing. So I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon, second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Miss Kalavitz?
Yes.
Mr. Long? Yes. Miss Bladner?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson? Yes. Miss Grant?
Yes. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Okay, yeah, Miss Booton?
Oh, sorry, I do. I would like to -- in the consent agenda, I would like to move number nine, approval of revision, to Citizens Advisory Committee bylaws to an action item, please.
I just want to be sure that's going to come after the public policy approval.
It is.
Okay, anything else? Okay, my report, I have just a very brief report. First off, I want to say thank you to our community members that did apply for the board position. We originally have 14 applicants that applied. One person did drop out. There are other opportunities, I just kind of want to point out also, for people seeking to get involved in the community. We have the Students Excellence Foundation, our PTAs and our boosters. And there is a board election next April, where a two-year seat and three, four-year seats will be up for election. I want to bring up that there is a webinar that the Illinois State School Board Association is having on September 15th on what it is to how to do petition circulation. I have asked Mrs. Layacano to include that in the minutes that come out from the -- or the comments that she sends out after the meeting. Just a reminder, board members, with school having started last week, everybody has their adopted schools for this year. Just to -- opportunity again for what adopted schools are. Each of us have three schools. I know how I -- there is no written rule in terms of what you do or don't do for your adopted schools. I know that I try to hit each of mine at three times during the year, a principal visit, some classroom visit, and then an event, things like Veterans Day, Explorer Day, Field Day, things like that. I try to hit it at my schools as well. That's all that I -- that's all that I have. Okay, next is public comments. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comments lineup sheet was made available until 7:00 PM. Board members are -- our board meetings are available for viewing via the live stream on the district's YouTube channel. We do have public comments tonight. We do a lot -- we will have enough for people to do three minutes for public comment. We're not going to shorten it. As with all public comments, please be aware that it's the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comment until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is here to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comment does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak may be shortened. We're not going to, we'll keep it at the three minutes. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Hanlon has a timing system over there that will keep you on track for while you're reading. When the timer counts down to zero, we will ask that you stop your comments. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The first person up is Spencer Garrett, and then after that will be David Somer.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, for having me. My name's Spencer Garrett. I am a resident of Wheaton. I'm a married, father of five children, two grandchildren. This is the first meeting I've ever been to. And I just wanted to make a comment about your voting yes to having the book Gender Queer in our high schools. And I'm thankful, Angela, that you voted no. But for the rest of the board, it grieves my heart desperately that you would allow for such a lewd, pornographic, disgusting book to be viewed as sexualizing our children like that. I just want to read quickly what our state constitution says. This is written from 1848. It's really what we're all about as people, as we govern. It's a heavy thing. I know you have a heavy thing. I'm a businessman. You have a heavy thing as you decide what goes into our schools and what the next generation is going to view and look at. This is from our constitution. "We, the people of the state of Illinois," this is just one sentence, "grateful to Almighty God." That would be the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob that's in the holy scriptures, that not all people view, but certainly Christians, Catholics, Jews would hold up to these standards. "Grateful to Almighty God for the civil, political, and religious liberty." So if you don't believe in the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, it's okay. But listen to what else this has to say. "Which He hath so long permitted us to enjoy, and looking to Him for a blessing upon our endeavors to secure and transmit the same unappared to succeeding generations." Do you really think that book does that? Oh, boy, I don't. It's disgusting. It's lewd. It's pornographic. It violates everything about me and decent men and women who are trying to raise their children in the best way they can. "In order to -- in order -- sorry. "In order to form a more perfect government, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity to ordain and establish this constitution for the state of Illinois." Let me just repeat that. Promote the general welfare. Do you think men and women voted yes to have Gender Queer? And I can't believe the pictures that I saw from this disgusting, lewd book. It is so beyond perverse. It is so -- it's beyond pornography.
Thank you. Next up is David Somer. After David Somer is Marilyn Mauritz. Go ahead.
My name is David Somer. I've lived in Wheaton for over 30 years. My wife grew up in Wheaton and attended Wheaton North. And we have had eight of our children go through District 200 schools. I'm stunned and outraged at the behavior of this board and certain educators within District 200. I'm infuriated and extremely disheartened that this board voted to use taxpayer dollars to purchase the pornographic book Gender Queer and others like it and make it available to our children. This is unacceptable. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Yet I doubt you are. Your cowardice and lack of common sense will be talked about for many years to come. You are supposed to be protecting and educating our children. If this material is appropriate for our children, then it's appropriate for us all. Quoting now, "It really never occurred to you to put something into your vagina, not even a finger? It really didn't. So you've never tasted yourself? What? No, ew. Wait, you have? Ha ha, of course, you should try." And so the next picture, vagina slime. The girl looks at her finger covered with vagina slime, then says, "Nope, I can't do it, I refuse." Another page. "I got a new strap-on harness today. I can't wait to put it on for you. It will fit my favorite dildo perfectly. You're going to look so hot. I can't wait to have my cock in your mouth. I'm going to give you the blowjob of your life. Then I want you inside me." The boy reading this says, "Holy shit. This is the most turned on I've ever been in my life. I'm dying." There are graphic pictures accompanying all of this. Pictures of a naked girl, two boys naked and having sex, boys grabbing their crotches, another young boy or girl sucking on a penis, and so much more. Though to those of you who voted to use our tax dollars to fund this garbage and make it available to children, do the honorable thing and resign.
Next up is Marilyn. Next up is Marilyn Mauritz, and after that is Kelly Gillenwater.
I don't think I can match those last two speeches very well.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I said I don't think I could match those last two speeches very well. I came with a different agenda. I am new to the area. I spent 50 years in St. Paul, Minnesota. And I was a high school librarian at the St. Paul Urban Schools there with a school that was 95% free and reduced lunch and struggled to meet graduation requirements. So you can imagine what I thought when I moved here and found these glorious facilities and very transparent management and a 95% graduation rate here. So in coming to a few of the board meetings, it has been hard for me as a retired teacher of 10 years to feel your pain trying to do a good job and having very little gratitude. So that's all I really wanted to say. And in terms of the book that might be discussed all night, I guess that there are, in the Library of Congress, a various basic review form that can take care of all of this. And it starts with you reading the entire book and then putting your comments that you don't want, and then putting those forward instead of going through all of this other remonstrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Gillenwater, and after that is Hannah Gates.
Hi, I'm Kelly Gillenwater, lifelong resident and parent of the district. According to the Academy of American Pediatrics, gender dysphoria is a mental health disorder. I question all of you as to why you keep pushing agendas that put thoughts and ideas in young minds when we are supposed to be educating them, giving them math, science, reading, writing. Why do we feel we have to do this? Last month, five of you approved Gender Queer. The others all stated that if they saved one life by having this book in the library, they did their jobs. I did some research. Those who identify or are struggling to identify and may be interested in this book for various reasons, they are not -- they may say they're suicidal. They may say, or maybe cut themselves and tried, but they do not succeed because it is a cry for help. The majority of those who commit suicide and succeed are straight males. Over the last two years, we have seen numerous young men who had bright futures due to COVID protocols who took their own lives. I also stand before you to tell you that in doing some research, I found that in our high schools, you are asking our students and giving them codes to an app called S O R A. This is an alert, what I'm about to read, but this is from one of the books that our children in the high schools have access to. "We're each busting a load into this bottle. If you don't come, you have to drink it. Flamer. This is on the education app that you are asking every single one of our high schoolers to download, and there are other books like it on it. Parents aren't aware of this. I'm here to make sure that they do know it's out there, and they need to be reaching out to all of you. There are graphic, very detailed, explicit photos as well. These are our children. We send them to you, we entrust them to you, to educate them, not to put harmful ideology into their minds. If they have questions, it is the parents and the legal guardians' job to do so and/or to work with a school therapist or social worker. Please leave our children alone and give them back the education that I grew up with in this district. Thank you."
Next up is Hannah Gates, and after that is Shannon Lyman.
Hello, I'm Hannah Gates. I believe that my child's public education should not teach content and ideology that violates the religious freedom that we hold as American citizens. The overview of K-12 Human Growth and Development and Human Sexuality curriculum content informs me that the high school health course will teach content and an introduction to gender identity, gender expression, and gender roles. I believe that this content is politically driven. I urge the board to see that teaching this ideology desensitizes children and young adults that are minors into thinking that it is okay for teachers to talk to them about inappropriate sexual concepts and political ideologies. It is not okay. It is inappropriate. As American citizens, my son and I have a constitutional right to religious freedom. I urge CUSD 200 to see that teaching gender identity and expression and gender roles disregards and violates our religious freedom. This political ideology goes against our Christian beliefs. I will be seeking alternative coursework for my son to complete. I urge CUSD 200 to respect the religious freedom of its students by removing the teaching of gender ideology from the curriculum.
Next up is Shannon Lyman, and after that is Patty Cross.
Hi, my name is Shannon Lyman. I'm a parent of D200, and I have a son in sixth grade and third grade. I'm disappointed in the acceptance of Gender Queer. I am 100% supportive of tolerance, but this book does not support acceptance. It is isolating, and it does not allow for a person to feel accepted or provide a way to find supportive resources. I'm pretty sure if somebody is feeling this way that they don't want to have to look on the internet to try to find resources. It is isolating. There has to be better resources out there, and I challenge you as the board members to find those. This book is pornographic. It's disgusting. We have continued to fail our children for the last two-plus years. We made decisions, whether or not we challenged those, but we muzzled our kids for the last two years. And I'm tired of being labeled as like a right-wing extremist conservative. Like, I want the best for our kids, and I think that you all do as well. We have to stop. We need to focus on improving our education. We have been failing our district. We are minimizing test scores and dumbing down our kids. I have a -- I had a son last year in second grade. His vocabulary words were equivalent to what my now-sixth grader had in kindergarten. Like, one of his spelling words was "of" in second grade. We're minimizing -- we have to focus on education, and we need to find the right resources to accommodate the people that need those. But this book is pornographic. And what you just heard, like, we need to find better resources. And I just challenge us as board members and as a district that we can do that accordingly. We can have tolerance for everybody, but we need to find the right resources available. Thank you.
Next up is Patty Cross, after that is John Graham.
Hi, my name is Patty Cross. I have two students at South, and I live in Wheaton. My husband and I moved to this district because of the academic standards of the district. We moved here eight years ago. In the last couple of years, due to the pandemic, we've seen the academic standards of the district drop. We haven't been presented with a plan to get them back to where they should be. I would like to see that this year from the board. I would like to see what we are going to do to set our students up for success. I hear from members of the community of our students going off to university and coming back for this -- and coming back over Christmas break and not going back for the spring semester because they're not set up to succeed. What are we doing as a district for our kids to make sure that they succeed when they leave? I want to know what we're doing. I want a strategic plan to how we're going to overcome the damage caused by the pandemic. Currently, this is going to be harsh, but the legacy of this current board is the unnecessary masking of our children, academic failure of our student body, a decrease in student enrollment, and pornography in the schools. Now would be a great time to change that story. Thank you.
Next up is John Graham, and after that is Nathan Mead.
My name is John Graham. I have three children in the district, and I'm going to read some thoughts from a friend of mine, Kurt Brummel, who has two children in the district. And in case you all need a refresher as to the content that I'm going to talk about, I invite you to go visit this website. Don't worry, it's not spam. It's not a phishing site. It's actually far worse. Anyone in this audience here online, I encourage you to go visit this Skype. Parental discretion is advised, and see for yourselves the content that this board believes is appropriate for our children. C.S. Lewis wrote these prolific words in his book, The Great Divorce. "Evil can be undone, but it cannot develop into good. Time does not heal it." The same is true with gender dysphoria being promulgated by our national and state leaders. "The male and female sexual union is a divine design blessing in the context of committed marriage. When past and current cultures wander off this naturalist path, it's created severe anxiety, stress, isolation, resulting in horrific increases in suicidal thoughts and actions therein." Let that sink in. "In our district's handbook, students are prohibited from accessing at school any publication that's socially inappropriate or inappropriate due to the maturity level of the students, including but not limited to material that is obscene, pornographic, perversely lewd and vulgar, and contains vulgar language. Recently, this board voted five to one behind closed doors to affirm Gender Queer in our district libraries. This book is an abomination. It violates decency standards and directly violates the affirmation district code. Gender Queer is not educational. It's manipulative, promoting homosexuality and pornography to young, vulnerable, and innocent minds. This is not education. It's defamation, demoralization, and destruction of children's minds. It's pornographic in nature with explicit renderings of children performing sexual acts to each other. It violates our policy of prohibiting socially inappropriate material, pornographic material, obscene and perversely lewd and vulgar materials in our schools. It violates common decency standards at our school district and even more importantly, our responsibilities to each other and our children by promoting apparent behavior and making pornography accessible on our library shelves. To the five school members, school board members who voted for retaining this book in the librarian who recommended it, I'm going to ask you a question. Why are you sitting here wearing clothes today? Seems like-- Seems like a strange question, but it's my suggestion that you and I and everybody in society wearing clothes, we do it as a sign of common decency, not just to cover up unwanted abnormalities with our bodies. Putting this book on the shelves of our libraries is robbing our children of their innocence, robbing them of common decency, subjecting them to apparent and destructive lifestyles that are contrary to normalcy. It's my request that all five of you who voted for this book resign of your positions immediately. You have violated your oath of protecting our children, your first and foremost responsibility.
We take a break.
We ask, oh, excuse me. You know what? We're going to take a break.
Take a, take a break, Chris.
Taking a break.
Because I got up here, you're going to take a break?
Take a break.
Guys?
I'm going to ask that the community members that are present to please not interrupt, and let's be able to get through the public comments so that everybody has an opportunity to share what they wanted to share tonight. Next up is Nathan Mead, after that is Michael Myers. Mr. Mead?
Let me start again. Let me say how grateful I am. My name's Nathan Mead. I've got four kids. I only trust, right now, District 200 to teach up to third grade. I'm very grateful for my daughter's third-grade teacher and for my son's kindergarten teacher at Pleasant Hill. They're doing a terrific job. Well, you've already heard about all the images that are in the book Gender Queer. Let's not forget about Call Me Jack, Not Jackie. That is available for kids in our elementary school. Gender Queer is available for kids as young as 14. I think what is more, what is equally disturbing to all the images that have already been shared is that the author does not seem to have parents that can provide direction, protection, guidance, and answers regarding sexuality. So she goes to the internet to try to find it, and she goes on this sexual pilgrimage, and then she has all these images that she puts forward with it. And I'm so thankful for the teachers that challenged this, and they asked the board these questions. Do students need to see these images in order to be supported? Would you be comfortable posting these images in our high schools, on our district websites, at board meetings, in your own personal offices, on LinkedIn, Mr. Paulson? How would you think the majority of parents in our district would react if they knew that these were in our library? I think we're seeing that tonight. If these images were drawn by a student in a class project, would they be appropriate? What if these images were on a student's Chromebook? Is this, does this inspire excellence? Is this the vision we are aiming for in Wheaton District 200? Ms. Crabtree, Mr. Long, Mr. Paulson, Ms. Blatton, and very sadly, Mr. Hanlon, you voted yes to these questions by approving to keep Gender Queer available again to kids as young as 14. Ms. Blatner, thank you. Thank you for voting no. Thank you for protecting the children of Wheaton Warrenville District 200. You are standing up and saying no to pornography, that it's not the best resource for kids, and it should not be in our schools. I cannot thank you, Mrs. Blatner, enough for constantly being the single vote, the vote of reason in a room full of empathy that is lacking wisdom. One thing I keep hearing around town that I've already said is that this is Wheaton Warrenville, we do not have pornography in our schools, but we do. Parents, grandparents, wake up, stand up. We have fantastic teachers in our district, but we also have to remain vigilant. I wish that this could be trust and then verify, but sadly, I will not be like this author's dad. I will be there to provide direction, protection, guidance to my children, and I will have to verify and then trust.
Next up is Michael Myers, after that is Rachel Kloss.
Hello, Michael Myers. Have two kids who attend the Wheaton Public Schools. And Mrs. Blatner, I too want to publicly thank you for upholding our district's educational policy to keep our children from accessing at school any publication that is socially inappropriate, obscene, pornographic, pervasively lewd, and contains indecent and vulgar language, and I highly, highly respect you for doing this and voting to remove Gender Queer from our high school libraries. Mr. Paulson, Ms. Booton, Mr. Hanlon, I too am concerned that several of our LGBTQ youth have seriously considered suicide this past year, but my question for you is what statistical evidence do you have that reading this book is going to prevent them from committing suicide? And furthermore, how many of our students have to be harmed before we're going to reconsider removing this from our libraries? And Mr. Long, I find it deeply troubling that you, an active participant in an evangelical church, believes that a book with graphic depictions of and dialogue about sex toys and sex acts is acceptable for minors, when a liberal company like Amazon on their website says this is for those who are 18 and older. Ms. Crabtree, if you want to show us that you care about kids, then as president, please stop fearing teachers' unions, superintendents, fellow board members, woke mobs, liberal media outlets, and fear God, and govern in a way that protects our kids from being groomed and preyed upon. And if the five of you cannot do that or will not do that, then would you please step down so that five in our community who will can do so? Thank you.
Next up is Rachel Kloss, and after that is Alicia O'Connell.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Clegg. I'm a Wheaton resident, and I have four children. I've got two, sorry, I've got two items this evening. First, regarding sexually explicit material in our school libraries. I was appalled at the board vote to retain material in our school libraries that is undeniably sexually explicit, lewd, and pornographic. I listened to your public statements regarding this material and found the vast majority of your arguments to be extremely one-sided and lacking consideration for our student body as a whole. For those that voted in favor of this material, if a picture of a male body part in someone else's mouth does not meet your standards for sexually explicit material, then I would love to know where your line is. I work really hard on multiple fronts to keep my kids safe. This material is a front and a front to my efforts, and I roundly reject the claim that you have our students' best interests and safety as your top priority. Second is coursework accountability and grading. I have noticed a lowering of the bar in coursework accountability and grading standards, most notably at the high school level. It would appear, based on several grading rubrics, that we no longer value homework, preparation, or deadlines like we used to. Two of my four children, both of whom graduated from District 200, are currently in college, and these things I know with certainty. There are no test retakes. Deadlines are real, and they are hard and fast. If you turn your work in late, you most certainly will not receive full credit, and yes, you can even earn a zero. Indeed, in real life, the bottom grade is not 40%. It is a zero, whether you like it or not. And as it turns out in my experience with four children, a zero in the gradebook has a particular ability to revive a sense of urgency, productivity, and realign priorities. This is not a bad thing. But now, why do homework if it doesn't count? Why turn in an assignment on time when you can turn it in late and get full credit? Why study and prepare well for a test when you can simply retake it and have your lower score dropped? Kids tend to take the path of least resistance, and they tend to do the minimum if that's all that's required of them. Students used to have to do their best the first time around. These policies do not set students up for excellence in college or the workforce. Why is District 200 lower grading coursework and accountability standards? Thank you.
Next up is Alicia O'Connell, after that is Jennifer Castillo.
First, I would like to thank each board member for giving their reasons behind their vote regarding the book Gender Queer. Specifically, I would like to recognize Angela Blatner for good board governance by casting a vote in harmony with board policy regarding the access and distribution of pornography to minors. I would also like to recognize the two good men in our district who followed their conscience and challenged Gender Queer. Their actions were in keeping with board policy regarding pornography as they sought to protect the hearts and minds of children. For the record, I read Gender Queer twice, and each time I was struck by Maya Kobabi's deeply metaphysical question of, who am I? It is my understanding that two board members have a quote, "personal belief system" that answers this question, specifically in Genesis Chapter 1. Last month, while I listened to board members drone on about Gender Queer and unfounded assertions that this book, replete with obscenity, just might save a life, I was hopeful that these two men, armed with truth, would vote in congruence with that truth. Instead, they embraced a pornographic lie, admittedly rejected their quote, "personal belief system," and denied the truth of a book that actually does save lives.
Next up is Jennifer Castillo, after that is Harold Longs.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Castillo. I've lived in the district for 11 years. My only child is a middle schooler in the district. LGBTQ plus youth are four times more likely than their peers to attempt suicide. Thank you to every board member who mentioned the importance of our students' mental health and their ability to see themselves and their peers in our school libraries' collections. Access to a diverse, inclusive selection of materials in our school libraries is essential to providing equitable education for our kids. Thank you for retaining Gender Queer in our high school libraries. Our students must have access to materials with LGBTQ plus themes. Gender Queer is an award-winning, critically acclaimed graphic novel for young adult readers, appropriately selected by our professional librarians based on professional standards. Our LGBTQ plus students, families, educators, and community members must be reflected in our libraries' collections. Visibility matters. I value the district's comprehensive material selection and reconsideration policies that align with professional guidelines. I strongly support our school libraries and our librarians and educators' expertise and professional judgment. Our educators and librarians do not need more oversight or second guessing of their professional decisions. They need and deserve a BOE and a community which supports, nurtures, and trusts their professional expertise. I strongly encourage the district to support library literacy training for parents and community members. Learning how to search public access catalogs, understand the collection development process, learning how school librarians work with classroom teachers, et cetera, will all help parents continue to collaborate with the district. Censorship and book banning have no place in our public schools.
Next up is Harold Longs, and after that is Jeanne Ives.
Harold Longs, I'm a resident of District 200. I just wanted to discuss a little bit about what happened last week at Wheaton North regarding the lockdown. I just find it a little strange that you guys, besides locking down Wheaton North, you locked down Sandberg, Washington, Lowell, and Hawthorne, but in the meantime, you didn't lock down Pleasant Hill, Longfellow, and Franklin, which are even closer than Lowell. And then I read the article that it was regarding a box, a suspicious box, and I found out it was closer to the football field, and then it came out to say it was an abandoned construction contractor box that had a broken lock or something on it. So in the meantime, there was a lockdown at the high school, and from the pictures I saw from the inside the school, it was complete chaos. There were classrooms with chairs piled up against the door. I heard classes fled the school, ran to Wheaton Sports Academy, I mean, Wheaton Sports Center. Then I also heard that some classes ran to a church. It was very little coordination of what to do. And I think next time you guys consider having a lockdown, you guys should tell what kind of lockdown it is so there is some kind of consistency in how you handle the situation. Now, you should be lucky that, considering the piling up the chairs and everything, somebody on the second floor didn't decide to jump out thinking there was a shooter in the school because there were rumors that there was a shooter in the school. Then at the end, the most ironic thing is that the supposedly construction box contained pornography in it, and that's the reason why you locked down the school? That's what I heard. You guys really got to do your homework, and before you call the cops and shut down half the schools in the district, you should find out what's really going on. Thank you.
Last up is Jeanne Ives.
Okay, so same topic, Gender Queer. At the last school board meeting, this board went into closed session to discuss whether or not to retain the controversial book in our school libraries. I personally believe that you violated the Open Meetings Act. You also redacted the book committee review comments from the information that I requested, so I need to know, what are you hiding? Well, it's pretty obvious now, especially after the litany of speakers. I suspect you refuse to have a full discussion on the book because the book is too graphic to discuss in a public forum. Board members described the book themselves as explicit, as showing images depicting oral sex. But here's a few other things that they failed to mention, and I won't cover old ground. The book literally shows, literally shows, a young boy stroking the penis of an adult male. Now, that's pedophilia, but you seem to be okay with it. The oral sex mentioned is male, male oral sex. The book describes promiscuous behavior. Are we in favor of promiscuous behavior now? You also, I mean, you said that you read the book, but it's no wonder you didn't want to discuss in the open because it's pretty graphic. The author herself also depicts and writes scary, inaccurate information about getting her period and going to the doctor for a pap smear. Do you think scaring girls about either one of these is good or bad? It's harmful. Now, what the public should know is that it was two in districts' teachers, two district teachers who filed the book challenge to Gender Queer. They said they also represented additional teachers in the district in doing so. Those teachers described the book as not meeting high literary or artistic excellence. Your teachers described the book as indecent, vulgar, pornographic, and pervasively lewd. They point out that this book violates your board policy. You voted against your own teachers anyway. Here's the kicker. The superintendent refuses to respond to multiple questions on whether or not a student checking out this material would be in violation of district policy, as was previously covered with other speakers. Meanwhile, in another email that I foiled and I received, the superintendent also admitted that we need to update our book selection policy as it hasn't been updated since 2004. And so one librarian should not be able to put a book into our library, especially after what we've seen so far. But I'm not surprised that this book voted five to one to keep the pornographic book in our school. You forced first graders, after all, to run around outside in 80-degree weather with a mask on. So what's happened to good judgment and common sense in this district? You've shown poor judgment, and now you've lost all more authority to run this district.
Superintendent report, Dr. Schuler. Superintendent Report, Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. Just a couple of things that I want to share with the board under my opening report this evening. Number one, obviously, the board's well aware, six days into the school year, I'm pleased with the start of the school year. I do just want to take a moment, because I think there's something really important to clarify. So, obviously, we did have the lockdown at Wheaton North on day one. I want to make it extremely clear that our safety committee within the district, it's comprised not only of district staff, but our first responders, police officers, work together on the enactment of any of our safety protocols. This building at Wheaton North was not put into lockdown simply because of the decision of the administrators. It was made with input from the Wheaton Police Department that deemed that to be the appropriate action. So, again, that is incredibly disruptive, I know, on the first day of school, but I will always side with safety, especially as our first responders are telling us that that is what's necessary. So, I am appreciative of the staff at Wheaton North for the way that they handled that, the way that that got resolved, and certainly got communicated out. Again, we don't want to have to use our safety protocols, but that's certainly what they're there for. Starting really this week, a bunch of open house, curriculum night, back-to-school events are happening, and again, appreciative of the parent-community engagement, right, in those opportunities to meet with our teachers, learn about the curriculum for the upcoming school year. We started the year with a couple of ribbon cuttings that I just want to highlight, both the two new playgrounds, Lincoln Johnson, tremendous parent-community turnout. For those, thank you to Dr. O'Keefe for leading those projects. Opened a new foods lab at Wheaton Warrenville South, very fun. We did a community open house at Jefferson. While that building is not brand-new this year, we hadn't been able to do just a kind of an open community house, and with new principal there this year, we launched the school year with an open house. And then, just a little precursor, next summer, we're going to be doing two library learning center renovations in addition to the playground projects and the other capital work, thanks to some developer donations from new development in the district and a grant that we received from state legislature. Starting the school year in terms of enrollment, we had shared with the board at the end of last year, an updated set of enrollment projections. The demographer that does those projections does them based on birth rate, live data in terms of residents in the community. At our sixth day, we're actually running in front of the enrollment projections at the early childhood, kindergarten, first-grade level. We're about 120 kids above that anticipated projection, so we are higher than expected, certainly at the primary grades overall, about 150 students higher than what was projected coming into this year. And then I did want to mention to the board that in your packets, there's a sheet of paper that talks about community engagement planning. There was a question a little bit earlier about strategic plan. We do, in fact, have a new strategic plan, does have very specific strategies on our focus around learning acceleration, taking care of the social-emotional health of our students, focused on college and career readiness for our students. And so, we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to share what the focus is within that strategic plan for this year. So, we've mapped out a series of community engagement opportunities, both with some of our existing service clubs, our local Chamber of Commerce. We're going to do a community town hall around that, so we have planned a number of opportunities that you'll see highlighted on that list. I share that with you tonight, just to say, as you're looking down that list, if you see another group within the community that you believe would be valuable for us to engage with, share that focus. Please, don't hesitate to share it, but that is all that's in the works as we begin to focus that. And then just a reminder, as we get to that item later in the oral report, when we look both at Division 2026 dashboard and work plan for this year, that is going to specifically address the question of what the focus is for this year, both in our learning programs and in our operational programs. So, I look forward to sharing that update with the board. That's all I have.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Acceptance of gifts from Longfellow Elementary School PTA, acceptance of gifts from Sandberg Elementary School PTA, acceptance of gift from Wheaton North High School Falcon Wings, acceptance of gifts to Wheaton North High School Girls and Boys Golf Programs, approval of resolution approving travel meal lodging expenses, approval of the updated DuPage Area Occupational Education System Intergovernmental Agreement, approval of the high school, middle school, and elementary school handbooks for 2022-2023 school year, approval of the guest teacher, substitute teacher pay rates for the 2022-2023 school year, approval of annual certification of serious safety hazard bus routes, approval of network access and firewall solution annual renewal, approval of teacher retirement system supplemental savings plan, rescind approval of waste and recycling services bid and reject all bids, approval of waste and recycling services contract extension, approval of bills payable and payroll, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, anything else?
No additional information, other than just a thank you for the four gifts that you're approving. We continue to be appreciative, thankful of the partnership with our PTAs and our booster organizations.
Board members, are there any questions or comments?
I just, I had the three clarification comments to the handbook changes. In the summary of changes, I wanted to be sure that the steps for plagiarism were added to the handbook. I did not see them in the handbook. There was a word missing, the word "and" in the second change, and on the third change, I wanted to be sure that the numbers were correct.
Yeah, I talked to Dr. Kyle today to make sure that those adjustments are being made in the handbook.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members regarding consent? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
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 Next up is Consent Agenda 2. Approval of Minutes, July 13, 2022, open and closed, August 8, 2022, August 9, 2022, August 11, 2022, special executive meetings, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to March 2021 as allowable by law. Are there any items board members want removed from this consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other information?
No, just a quick clarification. The reason we have this as a separate consent agenda is you're approving minutes from a previous meeting where Mrs. Kolevitz was not serving on the board, so my assumption is she'll abstain from this vote.
Board members, are there any questions or comments? I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Stained.
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes. Next up is the Policy Approval Consent Agenda. The following eight policy numbers are listed for approval. Revised Policy 2.230, Revised Policy 4.70, Revised Policy 5.80, Revised Policy 6.290, Revised Policy 6.80, Revised Policy 7.15, Revised Policy 7.270, rewritten Policy 7.285. Are there any items board members want removed from this consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other further information?
No more information.
Board members, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the Policy Approval Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
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 Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we do have an other action item?
I vote yes, too.
I'm sorry. Okay, motion passes. We do have, had an item moved to action, looking for the approval of revision of Citizen Advisory Committee, CAC, bylaws. Dr. Schuler, do you have anything before I go to...
Yeah, just a quick recap. Obviously, this was in front of the board at your last meeting. There were a number of questions and comments from board members, and so the agreed-upon plan leaving last meeting was that your community engagement committee was going to meet with the bylaws subcommittee to review the feedback from the board, and I'll hand it off to Mr. Paulson and Ms. Blatner to just make comment on that.
Sure, thank you. So Angela and I, as the Community Engagement Committee met with the CAC Subcommittee on August 10. We had both individually prepped for that meeting by reviewing all the board feedback at the July 13 meeting, including re-listening to all the comments again. The comments of the board were primarily focused on making sure the language was aligned with the role of the CAC as originally conceived, and I believe we captured the essence of that, what we discussed on July 13. Excuse me. In our meeting, we were able to collaboratively work through the specific language with the committee, and I believe what you see is what was discussed with that group. There was one phrase that I chose to add in as I was going through some edits, that's in 2E. That's the, excuse me, the phrase "on track to achieve," and the rationale for that was that the dashboard in Vision 2026 is really about a multi-year effort, and situations change all the time. One cannot judge a singular data point, a singular point in time, as a determination of success or not, so I thought that was a fair inclusion. One area that I think we're going to discuss here tonight is in 12C, which has to do with membership and terms. I know in the last meeting that Susan brought up the possibility of having a two-year-max term for the chair and vice chair. There was some discussion on that with the CAC, about a three-year cap. I think in the end, we settled to leave it as is, because the group felt like that was elected every year anyway. But in preparing my notes for tonight, I personally reflected on that issue, and I think there is a linkage to how new members get recommended to the board as well, within Section 6. As a board, there could be legitimate cause for concern if a group was in control for four or five years, making decisions about who is recommended for the membership, which could in turn indirectly control the message and advice that comes back to the board. So I think one of the core concepts behind the CAC originally is to increase community engagement. I believe setting a limit, if that's where this board wants to go, would lead to more voices, more engagement, and protect the diversity of opinion that we desire as a school board. In the end, the CAC does not direct us what to do. That's what we are elected for. They're an advisory group. They provide a data point. The board collects multiple data points before taking any action or making any recommendations to the superintendent or giving direction to Dr. Schuler. So really, I believe regardless of the specific bylaw language, it doesn't change our responsibility as a board. So, again, what you have in front of you is a pretty accurate summary of the discussions on August 10. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Angela, do you have anything?
Unless Angela, you have any additional comments?
You know, the only thing that I would like to add in hearing and participating in the discussion about the limit term for the chair, and I guess co-chair would go along with that one as well, is my personal belief, and I think I've shared this with a couple of you, and I shared it, I believe, at the meeting that we were at. I have a hard time with the fact that we turn anyone away. I think if we have community members who are willing to step up, commit to the time, go through the process of applying, and willing to give to the district, I have a hard time with turning anyone away. So, that ties into if the concern is that someone being chair for more than two years would have influence over the membership selection, and we might have an imbalance of representation of our community, I personally think it could be solved by allowing everyone who wants to be part of it and who will commit and show up. If they're not showing up, then they rescind their position. That's my thought on it, and that's all I had to add. I think Brad did a great job summarizing the meeting we had.
Other board members?
So, yeah, one second. So Brad, you're in 2E, was the phrase "or on track to achieve." Okay, got it. Thanks.
Yeah, so, yeah. So what we talked about in the committee was to review the annual work plans to ensure that, that's wrong, 2E, review the dashboard, because originally that was test score.
Yeah.
And we know the dashboard is more encompassing of what we're trying to do in terms of educational outcomes.
Yeah.
And the student experience. So, review the dashboard on an annual basis to ensure that we are achieving or on track to achieve the goals and performance measures.
Right.
We can't look at one point in time and say...
Understood, but we just added that one.
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Booton, I think you were next.
Thank you. So, the way I approached this is, I went back, I mentioned last meeting that I was on the first CAC group in 2015, and I went back to, I keep everything, I still had the letter from, that was given to us in October of 2015, welcoming us to the CAC, and then from that, I actually went back into the minutes in 2015 of when the CAC was formed to find out what the impetus was of the CAC, what was the point of it at the time. And that is how I approached this, to find out, because I just felt like what we talked about and what was presented at the last meeting was very different from why that committee was set up in the first place, but I needed to confirm that, because I hadn't. So, I just want to, I'm going to just take a couple of minutes here to talk about that, what I found, and then I have very specific changes that I would like to recommend, but I think this helps to provide that groundwork for why I'm asking for these changes. So, and I don't know, this might be the same letter that goes out now, I don't know, but in the letter that I received on October 5, 2015, "The CAC will function as an entity through which the committee members are asked to offer opinions and advice on various school district matters. This will help the board and administration to know and understand the range of viewpoints in the community on issues at hand, but also help citizens understand through direct communication with district personnel the issues the school district is facing." So, I thought that was pretty clear about what the CAC did. Now, what I thought was interesting, going back and looking at the formation of the CAC and why it was done in the first place, it actually came out of a community engagement update by Mrs. Loyackno at the May 27, 2015, meeting, and that it was presented as part of the community engagement plan. And at that time, it said, "is part of the minutes." "The district has many groups that have ongoing relationships with the district, but there is not one group of involved concerned people representing a wide group of people and thoughts." Another point, committee makeup is very important and has to be a guided, diverse group, so all areas and voices can be included. At the June meeting, I don't have the June many minutes, because the CAC bylaws were just presented to the board, and the direction was, "Come back in July, and we'll discuss it." So that's why I skipped over June. There wasn't any real discussion. It was really July, the July 8, 2015, and the August 12, 2015, where there was a lot of discussion about the formation of the CAC and why. of discussion about the formation of the CAC and why. And so, from July 8th, 2015, "The committee allows for engagement and a significant opportunity for people to volunteer and to meet regularly in a structured setting. The participants will be educated about the district and will represent the broad community." In discussion points, "May be difficult to find the right people to represent all areas of the district." In the, also in the discussion points, it was a suggestion to change the wording of, quote, "a quorum to take official action," to, quote, "a quorum to make a formal recommendation for clarification purposes." So I thought that was interesting, because at that time, it was also saying, "We are looking for recommendations and not action, vote, oversight, anything like that." So I thought that was interesting. Those selected might need to share the common idea that they want what is best for the community and the schoolchildren. The committee has to be willing to work through problems and disagreements, so that problems can be solved and the district can become better. Dr. Schuler reminded the board that this is not the end-all, be-all to community engagement. It is part of a bigger communication process. The goal of the CAC is to give the board one more voice to listen to as decisions are made." So that is that meeting. And then August 12th, 2015, this is when the charter and the bylaws were actually voted on and the CAC was formed. "One key strategy for engaging and soliciting meaningful feedback from our community is the development of the Citizens Advisory Committee. The CAC is one strategy included in a broader community engagement plan for the district. The CAC provides an ongoing, regular, and structured mode of two-way communication between the Board of Education and an informed, involved group of community members. When the board gave the charge to the Engage 200 Committee, it was stated that one of the end results would be an ongoing community engagement." I think most of you are right, just clarification, Engage 200 were the series of community engagement groups held in 2015. That was about the future planning for the district on multiple topics. So, and then continuing, this is not the only structure the district would use. This is one strategy to reach more of the community and hear their thoughts. Superintendent's job is to consider all of the input and come up with the best recommendations. This process could be stopped at any time if it is not working. And finally, getting feedback from many sources makes for good community engagement and the opportunity to get other voices. When Dr. Schuler was hired, the board requested this, and so this is presented in response to that request. And the vote was taken, at that time, to form the CAC. So that helped me to ground myself as far as how I was going to look at this feedback and what the CAC was meant to be and what, how it's meant to serve the Board of Education. And that's what I base my feedback on tonight. So the specific changes I would like to recommend in Section 1, the mission statement, the phrase "as a partner," I would like to have that removed. I believe that implies more of an equal weight to what the CAC was doing in their advisory committee. Under two, number two, CAC objectives, points E and F, I believe those are roles of the board. I believe the way that those are written, those are still implying oversight in a way to the board. And what I would recommend is removing bullets E and F, and in its place, adding one bullet that says "A review and update of the Vision 2026 dashboard and board annual work plans will be included in the annual CAC agenda." That way, it, I think that's fair, and I understand that the CAC would want to look at those points, but I think that it can just be stated more plainly that it will be part of their agenda to hear and update and review that, and that there's, yeah, and it's just that it's part of the agenda. In number four, tenure of the committee, I would like to add a sentence at the end of that paragraph, that "As a school that clarifies what a school-sponsored body is, as a school-sponsored body, all CAC members are required to adhere to all Board of Education policies." In number six, membership of the committee, in Section A, in the third sentence, I would like to add a phrase at the end of that sentence, so the sentence would read, "However, any number of people, including people who are not members of the CAC, may be included in subcommittees constituted by the CAC," this is where I add, "with people chosen according to the rules set out in bullets D and E of this section." In Section A, the last sentence, again, I would like to add a phrase at the end of that sentence, so the whole sentence would read, "However, the President of the Board of Education may appoint a non-voting liaison from the board to the CAC on either a permanent or rotating basis to any monthly or subcommittee meetings." So adding the phrase "to any monthly or subcommittee meetings." And then I just had a question on bullet D. I'm not sure why it says "where possible." I'm not, I don't know why it says that. It just should be possible. And then the term for number 12, "In the organization of the CAC, Section C, second sentence, that these officers may be elected for up to a maximum of," I think we need to have a discussion about, "two or three cumulative terms across both Chair and Vice Chair positions." Angela, I hear what you were saying about if people want to step up, let them step up. However, this, I've seen this within PTA boards, too, that you, there are term limits so that other people can step up. Because I also know that if people continue to do it, and a group of people, I've seen this in the PTAs, too, where if someone just keeps saying, "I'll do it, I'll do it," it never allows that to open up for someone to step up and take a leadership position. And that's why I think that there are term limits on the PTA board. And this is actually, I actually have recommended this type of thing before with the PTA, and my last year at Whittier, I was asked to be on the Bylaw Review Committee, and this was some, that was like the one thing I brought up, is because we had, there were term limits on each board position, but I was recommending, and we had some people who were just bouncing around the board positions, and so they were on the PTA board for many years, because they had many kids. And I didn't think that, I didn't think we should do that, because it doesn't allow that space to open up and let someone else rise and be part of that board. Because if someone's doing it, I've been on those search committees for board positions, and a lot of time, everyone's like, "Well, if they'll do it, then we'll just leave it," you know? And I think it's okay if it's open, someone will step up. Someone always steps up. And I just think it really opens up for all different kinds of thoughts to come to be the Chair and Vice Chair of the CAC, and with the mission, the original mission being to provide us with a very diverse school of thought, I think we need to allow more people to step up and be Chair and Vice Chair. So those are my comments. Thanks for listening.
Can you just clarify, I think it was in point 6A, about subcommittees? I didn't follow that one.
Sure. I guess I just wanted that the people, so I added the phrase "with people chosen according to the rules set out in bullets D and E of the section." And D and E of that section talk about how members are selected to the CAC, so that it is, so that those people are chosen-
Got it. So subcommittees are consistent with-
Yeah, that the subcommittees are a diverse group of people, because I believe right now, the Chair and Vice Chair can just pick whoever they want to be on that community, that those subcommittees, and I want to make sure that there is a, you know, I think we need to make sure there's a diverse group of people on the subcommittee.
Got it.
So that's my clarification there. So, thank you.
I had a similar question about that. I think the sentence you added was that the President may, the Board of Education may appoint a non-voting liaison from the board to the CAC on either a permanent or rotating basis, and you included subcommittees as well? Is that the language?
I had, I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you. So this was the third sentence of Section A.
All right, so I guess I'm in.
So under number six, the membership of the committee.
Correct. So I think I was referring to the sentence you were going to add at the end of Section 6A?
I had, so I had two sentences I was adding. The third sentence and then the last sentence of Section 6, I was adding a phrase to, like I said, the one was according to the bullets D and E, and then to the last sentence, "The President may appoint a board member," I'm summarizing here, "to attend the meetings to any, to either a permanent or rotating basis to any monthly or subcommittee meetings."
When you stated that just now, it didn't occur to me when we were discussing it before, but it almost sounds like we, as the board, are trying to have some control or influence over the CAC, which I would rather the CAC be more organic and bringing things to us and not us having any, you know, control over-
Well, that wasn't the, that wasn't the original intent of the CAC. It was to bring board topics to a group of, a community group.
I don't know that I entirely agree with that, just having recommended that to the board. It was intended to be two-way, right?
Yeah.
It was intended certainly for the board to bring ideas and policies it was considering, right, to an engaged and informed group to provide feedback, but also for us to solicit information. So, I mean, I think, I hear what both of you are saying, and I think it's a fine line. I don't think that the intent is for one entity to control the other, but I bring you back to what Brad said, which is that nothing can take away from the authority the board has here at the board table. Doesn't matter how you write the bylaws of CAC, you still have your role and responsibility, and nothing takes away from that, right? So even when we created CAC at the time, there were members of the board not super supportive of the idea, but what they said at the time is, hey, each of you, when you cast your vote on any item, you have the ability to solicit whatever information you want to inform your opinion. That may well be information that CAC brings, that may be other constituents that you're talking to, listening to, or other places you choose to do your research. I don't, CAC was never intended to be like the lone voice of advice to the board. It's intended to be, right, one avenue. And I don't think, you know, just again, I think Brad captured it, I don't think anything in the change, in the recommended changes has really altered that. I think we altered language to try to reflect how the community is functioning right now. I mean, naturally, over eight years, the way CAC looks right now doesn't, isn't exactly like it operated at its inception eight years ago, right? And so I think the intent was to make sure that the language aligned to that really gave the committee, I think, the space to be the entity to, you know, to give its feedback. But again, you, as a board, can decide whether you want to listen to it or not. They have no authority as an advisory committee to compel you on how you vote on any topic, right? That is your authority as the seven members that cast votes here at the table. So a lot of suggestions. Susan, I appreciate the, certainly the suggestions. I guess my recommendation for you is that I think if you truly start to wordsmith individual items, I think you'll get lost here at the table. I think you have a recommendation in front of you. I would advise that you consider and vote on that recommendation, and if you're not comfortable with it, four of you are not comfortable with it and vote no, then you can continue to provide direction on what we need to do to adjust it, but for the sake of, I think, moving the item forward, I would urge you to consider the motion and the recommendation you have in front of you.
Other board members?
I had one comment. I agree with the comments on it's appropriate for advisory organizations to have a defined role. I don't see the bylaw changes as moving the needle in any direction.
Can you pull your mic, make it a little bit closer? Thank you. Is that better?
I don't see the bylaw changes as moving the needle in either direction on that. So I'm comfortable with the proposals. I think the points you raise are possible good language to consider, but it's hard to consider it on the fly. So I, the question for me is, are these changes a step in the right direction? And it seems like they are, and I think the other things can be decided in the next bylaw review, and I hope that the next bylaw review would maybe start with committee of the board and of the CAC, rather than going back and forth. I think that would be a more productive process.
Yeah, so one is, I appreciate the work the group did on the revised bylaws. I think that was a great process. Everyone took it, owned it, and we got a better result. That's the first thing, so I really appreciate that work, as do I appreciate the CAC, and I know no one here thinks otherwise, but just to reiterate that, because I know we have members of the CAC here, and I just want them to know that we appreciate that. I tend to, not I tend to, I do agree with Dr. Schuler's point that, at the end of the day, these are all, anything the CSE puts forward is a recommendation, you know, it's a thought, it's a different perspective, and I like that. I like, I like that feedback. The other piece that I'll address directly, just one phrase on partner, which you brought up, Susan, is, you know, we use that, in my opinion, we use that with a lot of groups, right? We use it with the city Wheaton, first responders, Warrenville, good on the list, right? And I like that term, right? Because it assumes, in my opinion, it assumes positive intent, and, you know, the results, while, you know, they, sometimes it can be prickly and we don't, you know, I get that, but I like that feedback, and I like the ability to hear alternative opinions. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the way the minutes are, or, I'm sorry, the way the charter's been updated. I will vote to support it if it's brought forward. And again, at the end of the day, anything the CSE produces is a recommendation to the board, and that's, that's, that's good. We can, we can consider their feedback and adjust course accordingly, or send it back, or, you know, I like that. That's a good, that's a good thing, that's a good result. So I like, I like that, the outcome that the subcommittee did to revise the charter. So I appreciate that work. Yep. Excuse me. Yeah, I, same thing, I mean, I appreciate the background and the work that you did, Susan, but I do think we ask, you know, Brad and Angela to work with them, so I'm kind of curious where they are in it, but at the end of the day, with some of these changes, that's the question I ask myself, kind of, you know, kind of, so what? We can really get tied up in the language and some of the specific words. I tend to agree with you on the term limits for Chair, however you want to word that. At the same time, does that really change the work they're going to do? And in my mind, it, you know, it doesn't, I don't have a big concern if we have somebody for five years, I agree that it's better to get a change and have other people step up, but, you know, that's okay, and if it becomes a problem, we could make a change. So, you know, I appreciate that, but we could beat this up for months if we keep, you know, wordsmithing all these things. So not that they're not important, but is it going to change what the CAC is doing for us? And I don't know that those changes would change what they're doing.
Anybody else before I make a few comments? Okay. Thank you. So a lot of people spent a lot of time, Mr. Paulson and Mrs. Blatner, at the, you know, I appreciate you taking the time of actually re-watching that last meeting, grabbing our feedback, bringing it back, and working with the subcommittee that I know has spent quite a bit of time as well, drafting these, you know, drafting these bylaws. As I sit here and I listen tonight, one of the things that I remember seeing on here, and maybe this is something we should think about, is that bylaws are up for review at least every three years, and one of the things that I'd like to propose to each board member this year is to attend a CAC meeting. We can have two of us there. I'd like us to see, I'd like you to see. I had the opportunity, I know, Mr. Paulson, a couple of you went one time, but we hit the majority of meetings. I was able to see a lot of really good constructive conversation happen. I go back to the meeting of the dress code, where the, where the administration, Dr. Schuler, had presented to the board a dress code- code, where the administration, Dr. Schuler, had presented to the board a dress code, and then went to different groups for feedback. That dress code changed because of feedback from groups like the CAC. And I do appreciate, and I was at that meeting where that conversation happened, and there was a lot of very good, very good conversations. So I guess what I'm thinking is, is if we go ahead and we, and there's a couple parts I want to talk about as well, you know, to be thinking about, maybe we look to do this again next year. But everybody has had the opportunity to go to meetings, see what it looks like. I think that might help with some of the, some of the language in here. You know, I'm stuck on ENF myself. Mrs. Booten brought those up. I would have liked those struck. I think those are board, what we do at the board table, those should be our goals and objectives. And it's the word ensure that I can't get past in my mind, but, you know, as you have said, you know, at the end of the day, what comes out of there is really a recommendation. I just like, I value people's time. I want this Citizens Advisory Committee to be an authentic tool that we use, and I feel that we did use that last year like that, and I'd like that to continue. So I do feel that words do mean something. So I guess in my mind, the way that I'm looking at this, and I'll go on to membership, you know, I, when I talked about that at the last meeting, I wasn't thinking in terms of chair and vice chair, because in my mind, I look at those as elected positions, and so it's not as, the term limited to me is not as important on that, because that's the group that is electing them. I looked at it as the membership as a whole having a five-year limit. If we want to, as Mrs. Blatner said, we want to encourage people, maybe we need to be looking at that as the, you know, we could grandfather something in there for current people, but maybe if we're looking at this over the next year, and we want to look at this, maybe it is a limit on the number of years. Maybe it's four years like a board member or three years, you know, to get more people that opportunity to serve on that committee. So I am going to vote to approve these, but I'm going to say with the idea that over this next year, as each of you attend the Citizens Advisory Committee, to be thinking about these bylaws, thinking about what you want this committee to continue to evolve and grow as. And let's bring this back, and let's talk about having this possibly come up again next year and look at the bylaws. So, anything else anybody has to say?
I just want to clarify, because I just jumped right into my presentation. I just want to clarify that I think the CAC is very, very valuable to the district. Like I said, I apologize. I just jumped right in, and I do very much appreciate the work of the subcommittee and the Community Engagement Committee. And I think that's why I'm so protective of it, because I think it is such an asset to the board, and we do turn to them for very important roles. And we have policies that state that certain things have to be reviewed by a parent committee, and we use the CAC as that committee. And so it's highly important to our district, but that's also why, and to the board, but that's also why I'm very, being very protective of it. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Anybody else before we take a vote?
Just one last comment. Having worked with it, I'm, you know, happy with approving it. But I think perhaps we could change the word ensure. I think the ensure has kind of rubbed some of us the wrong way, or collectively. I think the intention was that that would be something the CAC would do, like, you know, review them to see what the standing was, not to ensure oversight of the board and the district. Sort of if that can be tweaked a little just to make that more clear, because I think the word ensure is something that's kind of not fitting with us. But I don't think that needs to take us to next month, like if we can come up with a favorable word. Right now, we can change it and vote.
We definitely can. I believe we can make a small, we can do what we want with these on an annual basis to review. It could be a review versus ensure to share to, would you have a thought that you were thinking about, Mrs. Blatner?
Where is that, just while you're thinking about that? Where's the word ensure up here? I don't.
It's ENF, into ENF. On an annual basis to ensure that the Board of Education and the CUSD 200 administration are achieving or on track to achieve. And then the next one was to ensure the work plans are clear, comprehensive, measurable, and consistent. It could be review.
Oh, I see. Yeah, thank you.
Right, but it starts with review. But I mean, I think that's the intent, is just to kind of review and see where the district is at.
I think provide feedback. I mean, I think that that's what we want. We want feedback.
Right.
I don't know that ensure is the correct word, but I know that we would like feedback.
Does changing that word, is that going to change anything about the work that they do? I agree that the word is, it's probably not the right word. It reads, like, they're going to be oversight on us, but that's not the intent. And what are they really going to do with that?
So maybe we can let that go for this year, and when we review next year, we can
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Yes.
Clean it up a little.
I don't disagree.
Right.
And I also don't disagree, you know, I really appreciate the work you did, Susan, but it's kind of the so what of it. Like, yeah, I agree, but does it really?
Good point.
What is that, what's that going to change to what the CAC does or brings back to us?
Good point.
Right? If we're not meeting our 2026 goals, none of us are going to be happy, and we'll be having those discussions. So.
Correct. I agree with you, Dave. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask for a motion in a second. I lost my train of thought here. Motion in a second to approve the revision of the Citizens Advisory Committee bylaws.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
No. Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we are now on to oral reports. I see Mrs. Murphy walking up there, the Human Growth and Development and Human Sexuality Curriculum. Dr. Schuler, would you like to start us?
No, I'm going to hand it right over to Mrs. Murphy.
All right. Mrs. Murphy.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm providing an update on our Human Growth and Development and Human Sexuality curriculum. My presentation this evening will answer three guiding questions, with the first being, what is currently taught in District 200 for this content? We do have state Board of Education standards for health. They are coupled with physical education. They are one set of standards. There are three goal areas for health. There are three goal areas for PE. And within this particular topic of human growth and development, it's Goal 23 that makes up our current content, which is part of the human body system. We also have other requirements, and these come from Illinois School Code and the Illinois Administrative Code. There's three specific mandates that are required. They are included in our current curriculum. You'll see those listed right here. And all three of these have an opt-out opportunity for families. If any families do want to see what is included in our current curriculum, this is posted on our district website. They can find this in the Student Learning section of the school website. And what families need to look for is the documents that are labeled health. There's one for each grade level in K-8, and then there is one for Grade 10 at the high school level. I did include an example from sixth grade there. And then if families are specifically interested in this topic, human growth and development and human sexuality, last year, we did create a one-page document that shows the exact content for this particular subject from kindergarten through Grade 10. I did include that in the board's green folder tonight as a review for what that particular content is. This is also posted on our website. The second guiding question is, what changes have been made by the Illinois State Board of Education? Last year, Public Act 102-0522 was passed into law, and this requires the Illinois State Board of Education to adopt the National Sex Education Standards as the Illinois Learning Standards for Sexual Health Education. It requires school districts that do deliver comprehensive sex education to utilize a standard-based sex education course. And at the elementary level, it creates personal health and safety standards. Since we first talked about this in October, there have been updates from the State Board of Education, specifically last year towards the end of the school year. In an ISB meeting memo dated from May, it specifically states the following. ISB is required to adopt the national standards, but school districts have the autonomy to determine whether or not they will provide a course in comprehensive sexual health education. This was followed up in the next meeting in June, where the state board did adopt the National Sex Education Standards. Part of that public act also requires the state board to post resources for districts that do choose to teach these standards by August 4th. By, August 1st, rather. By August 1st, these resources were posted on the state board website. There were two resources. One was a one-page, non-regulatory guidance in the form of a checklist, and second was a brief webinar as a resource for school. That webinar was 12 minutes long. Just as a reminder, the National Sex Education Standards are organized into seven content strands. These are those seven content strands. I listed them out here. I also do want to note that the standards are a 76-page document. They do contain significantly new and different content than what is included in our current curriculum, which I outlined earlier. And this would require significantly more time to teach. Our last guiding question is, what is the recommendation for this school year and beyond? Our recommendation is to continue to implement our board-approved health curriculum, which is aligned to the state's standards and mandates. This is comprehensive health education. We also are recommending that we do continue to review any guidance if it is provided by ISB. It doesn't appear that that is on the horizon at this point in time. We would determine if we should form a curriculum committee if we do receive any further guidance. And if a curriculum committee was formed, we do not have plans to do that at this time, but if it were formed, there would be a lot of decisions that would need to be made, such as the future of sexual health education in District 200 within our current health instruction, our current elective options, and even graduation rates would need, or requirements would need to be evaluated. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions.
Who'd like to start questions or comments? Mr. Long?
On the updates where it says, determine whether or not they will provide a course in comprehensive sexual health education, what does that mean specifically? I mean, are we doing that now? Or what would be different about that than if not, we're not doing it, what would be different?
Currently, we have a health course in our schools. We do not have a comprehensive sex ed course.
Okay.
In my opinion, that would mean that would be an elective, and that would be a separate course.
Thank you.
Mrs. Murphy, but then at the, I think it's Slide 12, when you said, continue to implement our board-approved health curriculum aligned to state's standards and mandates, I thought you said that is comprehensive sexual education after that, or?
Comprehensive health education.
Okay, which is different from comprehensive sex education.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
Other questions or comments?
I'm good with the recommendation that was presented tonight. No other really substantive feedback. I'm just good with the recommendation on Slide 12.
I just want to say the same thing, that I agree with the recommendation. I promise I won't read as much as I did last night, but I went down the rabbit holes of just looking at all the stuff on ISB's website and that what we teach now. There is a question on that, it's an FAQ document on, excuse me, ISB's website about all of this. And one of the questions is, what about instructional mandates? If a district is not adopting the standards, does it still teach Aaron's Law or Health courses? And it says, topics that fall under a separate instructional mandate must continue to be taught if a district is opting not to adopt the standards. So the reason I read that is I just, I looked all of that stuff in the law and everything. I won't bore you with it. But what we teach now is based on the current mandates for health classes. And then things like Aaron's Law, which is how to recognize abuse, sexual abuse, and that kind of thing. So that's what we're doing now. Like, we are following the mandates that we should be and we always have, and we're just doing the thing that we've always done. And just the other thing I wanted to point out is that, is just to verify that in this new law about, you know, sorry, I can't remember what's the exact word, but a sexual health curriculum, that this was done by our legislators, that ISB did have to adopt it, that it is written into the law, it's buried in the law, but it is in there. And I think there are issues with this, that we need to, we, meaning board, community, need to be talking to our legislators who passed the law and how we implement it, because ISB, it is law. ISB had to adopt it. And so I just, I just want to say that as we have comments and feedback, that we need to be reaching out to our legislators. I know, I plan to do that, to find out more. So I just wanted to say that too, that go to your legislators, not ISB had to do it. So, thank you for the work. I appreciate it.
I have one more question, Chris. Sorry. So is the anticipation that come next fall, like the 2023, 24 school year, that we will continue with what we have?
Yeah, the recommendation is to continue with our current practices until we were to come back to the board and suggest we consider something otherwise. So we have no timeline on a change. We are recommending we continue with our practice until such time that we were to revisit it. I don't see anything on the horizon that's likely going to change that.
So the current legislation that requires the teaching of the National Sex Ed standards, which goes into effect next school year?
We are in compliance, because we teach comprehensive health education. So this says only if you are going to teach a course in comprehensive sex education, you must align with the national standards. We don't do that. And we have the ability to continue with our current practice.
With what we have. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else before I go?
Just one thing for Susan. Aaron's Law is referred to in three of our policies already. So there's specific reference to in 5.90, Abuse and Neglected Child Reporting, I can't see it, 5.10 Staff Development Program, and 7.250 Student Support Services. Make specific reference to Aaron's Law.
I just want to make sure I absolutely understood it. So this 76-page standard, there is no requirement that we have to act on that affirmatively or negatively?
No.
Thank you.
Anything else before I go? So I've spent a lot of time reading these standards, a lot. I did a lot of research. The standards are huge. You know, if you look at sixth through eighth grade, I think there's 47, maybe, something along those, something along those lines, maybe even more than that. You know, I went out there and I looked at, you know, lessons and things that are out there. There's a there. There's an organization that has lessons for every single one of the standards for these. In my estimate, it would be about 12 to 15 hours if we took it each grade of middle school. And, I mean, that's a pretty significant amount of time that would be spent if we were to, if we were to go to these standards. And so, I'm glad as a district, we are not going to devote any time right now on this, because I think the state is going to have to come back and say, "That's not sustainable." I mean, something would have to give in our curriculum, and what would be given? You know, are we, if it's going to come out of our health curriculum, are we not going to teach about substance use? Are we not going to teach nutrition? Are we not going to, something's going to have to give if we were to do this and do it well. And I just don't see that this time is going to be available for people to do that. And so, you know, Illinois is somewhat contradicting themselves with the health standards that they have and then adopting these in addition to that. I think we stick with, like you said, the, I'm fine with the plan as we've been doing all along. I don't see us spending staff time on something that I think they're going to realize at some point in time. It's not, it's not sustainable, it's not, and it's also an unfunded mandate. It's a lot. It's taking where our current community is and like climbing up a mountain so fast you can't even stop. I mean, like, it's just, it's not even, I just don't even see it as being something that we can, we can do right now. Are there pieces and stuff in there? I would hope that maybe that's what they look at, and they create some kind of spiral. But to this whole blanketly adopting, I agree with Mrs. Booton. This was done at our legislative level. I think they need to hear about this, whether it's school districts banding together, it's board members, it's community members, need to go back and say, you know, "Do you understand what you did by doing this?" Because I don't think that they understand what they did by doing this. So, I'm, I'm good with the recommendations. Okay. And the other thing? Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Sorry, I lost my, okay. Next up, report on Vision 2026 Dashboard and 2022-2023 Work Plans.
Thank you. So, up on the screen, you'll see the electronic version of our dashboard. So, again, just a reminder for the board, you spent considerable time through last year building first Portrait of a Graduate and then the Strategic Plan built on that off of the Portrait of a Graduate. The Strategic Plan contained two critical elements, both the plan itself, so the specific strategies under academic excellence, the specific strategies under operational excellence were included with the plan, and then a dashboard, right? A dashboard including what are the key metrics that you want to monitor, set goals around, set targets for improvement around? And those metrics include both test score academic metrics. They also include some operational metrics. And so, we chose to use a product from ECR to build out our dashboard, and that's actually what we're showing you this evening. So, first on the dashboard side, there's really nothing that requires approval on the dashboard itself, because you already approved the metrics. A little bit of a show and tell on how they're going to look, and we just want to take you through and let you see it. This dashboard is going to go live on our website tonight, after we had a chance to share it, review it with you. But I say that knowing and understanding that any of the information that's on here, especially the descriptors, we can continue to adjust as appropriate. So, I just want to kind of give you an orientation. So, when you go to the new dashboard, you'll see ultimately two tabs immediately. Under the Home tab, if a member of the community were to click on that, you see the actual strategic plan itself. That's not a new document for you. Under the Indicators tab is where you actually will see the metrics that we identified. So, starting at the very top, there are just a couple of metrics around district characteristics. What's that?
Love to republish.
Okay. So, a couple of demographics, there's a few more that are missing on here that I think have to get republished so that they pop up. But again, just in terms of orientation, on the tile itself, which you'll see up here, is the actual metric with that data point. So, that first tile is just student enrollment, how many kids in our system. In the top right of each tile, there is a little question mark, what is it? Exclamation point?
I believe it's an "I" for more information.
Thank you. There you go. There's an "I" for information. As you click on that "I," it brings a pop-up to bring clarity around what is the metric. So, as we get down and look at some of the academic metrics, you'll see that a little more clearly. In some of the academic areas, I hand it off to Mrs. Murphy, you'll also see in that "I," that Information section, where we've targeted specific improvement targets. So, as we get into the reading and math achievement levels, especially within IAR, we've set some targets for growth improvement over the course of the plan. The other thing that I just want to point out is, separate from the "I," when, in a lot of these data points, when you click on the tile itself, it'll also bring up a graph with any history that's available. So, especially to start to get into test scores, you can click on the tile, it'll bring up a separate graph that shows any history. Over the four years of this plan, there will be history on all of these items. So, as we move into Year Two, every one of these tiles will have that drill-down capability that will show you the progression over time. Not all of them have it right now, because a couple of them are new data points, so there's just not a, not a history on the data point. But with that, Mrs. Murphy, I'll hand it over to you if you want to walk through the academic excellence ones.
Yeah, so I'm going to start out here. You're going to see the first set of metrics is academic excellence around reading and ELA, otherwise known as English Language Arts Achievement in the K-8 space. There are six metrics there. They are related to our FastBridge interim assessment and also IAR. So, and then we're moving into the next set. This is also the parallel, this is the academic excellence for math. Again, there are six metrics related to FastBridge and IAR. I will just click right here. As Dr. Schuler pointed out, you would be able to drill in where we have historical data. We have populated it with specific information as to historical data for both District 200 and the state. As I go back and reorient you, I also want to show in the information, we have provided context that explains that exact metric, that exact test, you know, platform that is used. And we have also indicated, such as right here, this is math achievement in grades 2 through 5 utilizing FastBridge. We have indicated the district's goal with our Vision 2026 Strategic Plan. I'm going to drop down here next into the Academic Excellence section that is for high school. Once again, we have six metrics in this space. Some of these are very familiar to the board, because we have, we have presented about these year after year, freshman on track, graduation rate. Some of these are also new this year, and we have, or we have expanded. For example, the early college coursework, we've also included industry-recognized credentials. I also think it's important to point out that some of these metrics say October 2022. The reason for that is because these metrics are related to our state report card, and that would be when that state data is finalized. It's still in a preliminary state at this point in time.
The areas in social-emotional learning that are highlighted for the board dashboard, our student connectedness, certainly that's something you've heard me talk a lot about. This is a measurement of our Trusted Adult Survey that we give our students, if they can identify a trusted adult within their school. Our most recent data shows that at 89%. Again, another, there's a descriptor on the "I" telling a little bit about what it is, and also in each of these areas, we'll give a little rationale as to why. The second factor, again, this is something that's been a part of our board dashboard for many years, and that's our high school co-curricular and activity participation. So, again, our most recent data point on that actually, this year, prior to that, was actually 2018. But if you open that up and look there, you'll see a comparison, actually see an increase in that number as well, as we increased from 66 to 72%. And then the last, the last measurement in the social-emotional learning space is attendance. This is the percent of students that have 90% attendance or greater within a school year. So, again, the newest one to be measured on your dashboard is student connectedness. As we move forward, that will be measured by both a pre and post survey that we'll do with our 3rd through 12th grade students. And again, if you look behind there, you'll be able to see some historical data or more deeper information.
The last metric that sits on our dashboard related to academic excellence is directly related to equity, and this is from the Equity Journey Continuum. That is newly part of the Illinois State Board of Education Report Card, and so that will be released for the first time this October, and we'll include that information as well on the dashboard. Again, since this is a new metric, I encourage individuals to look at the information that sits with that to better understand that metric.
As we move down into the operational excellence side of things, we've got finance and facilities. So, six indicators on the finance side, these are the same indicators that we have been reviewing and providing the board and the public information on in the past. And then specifically on the facility side, three, same concept, same information, three bits of information, three tiles. Most of that comes directly from either us internally or our architectural firms that I work. Mrs. Murphy, if you wouldn't mind, just on the, where you see the 33.28%, both on the, if you click on the "I," there is a little bit more information that talks about specifically what that number means. And then if you also click on the tile itself, similar to many other things, you'll see a history that you can roll through, just to get an understanding and a bit of a background if you're looking for information outside of a single fiscal year.
All right, so I'm next. Teacher retention, about 93%. If you click on that, Melissa, that'd be excellent. We do have this year's data, but state data won't come till October. But if you look at this year's data, retention without retirements, and also retention with retirements compared to the state average, they are higher than the state average. You kind of move out of this, Melissa, and then move into, one of the things that we're working on right now, we have principal retention, 99%. That's great. There's a lot of data that shows how important it is to keep the same administrators, just like teachers, in a building. And then positions filled. We've done a really good job with certified staff. The area that we're working on really hard daily right now is our CEA, our support staff. Those are the areas that we have some positions that are open, but this is something that now we can utilize and update when we have it. And then the last is staff demographics. We have it split into two different groups, support staff and certified staff, and that really breaks down the makeup of our faculty and staff. So, that's data that in the past I've presented to the board in October, but we're finalizing right now as HR is kind of in our accounting season right now, still hiring people.
So, I guess just really quickly, before we shift into the Strategy section, the last tab on this, any, any questions, clarification on the data element of the dashboard?
Just one. Kind of V1.0, right? And we'll continue to evolve our analytics. I, and probably, we're sure we're going this way, but I just want to point out, I would love to see kind of time trends on the academic side like we have on the operational side. I think that's really helpful, but I love it. It's fantastic. Great work.
Okay. The last tab that I just want to point out, so there was a question a little bit earlier tonight, just specific to what's the strategy this year? So, that last tab that's on here that drills into the strategy. So, I just want to orient you to how this reads. So, if you look at the very first one that's on the top, Implement Learning Acceleration Strategies and Programming, right? That is a strategy directly off of your strategic plan. The two tactical elements that are underneath it are, again, the tactics that are identified within your strategic plan. When you click on each of those, especially if it has a number, it brings up a sublist. So, in this, this first one that Melissa is clicking on, there are four very specific areas of focus around adoption of new curricular materials, right? Adopting enhanced curricular materials. Those are the specific strategies and areas that we're focused on this year. So, Melissa, I'll hand it off to you if you want to.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Schuler. So, with this specific tactic, you will see those four areas that are part of our work plan in the Educational Services Department this year, very specific to our work in the math area with adopting new instructional materials curriculum in the K-8 space and English Language Arts in the K-5 space, and also getting started with that work at the middle school level as well. We're very excited about those opportunities. Along with learning acceleration, you'll also see a tactic about digital tools. Whenever we are adopting curriculum, we are also always pairing that with making sure that we're looking at the digital tools that best fit that curriculum adoption. And so, the one strategy that sits on the plan this year is directly related to K-5 math, because we're in an implementation this year. Moving down into the next strategy, it is paired with learning acceleration, and this is about designing and implementing a balanced assessment system. The first tactic has three specific areas that we are working on. These have to do with new resources that we have brought to the school district to provide us with good data to make good informed decisions. That's about implementing FastBridge. It's about looking at a new data analytics tool. It's also about working with our staff on the most important assessments that they give, and that's the classroom assessments. We will continue to work on looking at our data through an equity lens, utilizing the tools that we are implementing. And once again, whatever work we're doing, we're also pairing it with any kind of high-quality technology that can support that strategy.
In the area of developing implementation resources aligned with our Portrait of a Graduate work, while we are doing work in each of those tactics that you see on there, formalized work will be done on identifying competencies, benchmarks, and instructional guidance for our descriptors in Portrait of a Graduate. So, in collaboration with Ms. Murphy and Dr. Salagi and myself, we will be collaborating with one another to research and develop competencies and benchmarks for our Portrait of a Graduate descriptors.
The next strategy on your Vision 2026 Strategic Plan has multiple work plan opportunities in my department, and this is all about expanding programming to prepare students for a full range of post-secondary opportunities. I'm very excited about the work plan that we have laid out here. There's actually nine different work components that we have listed out. We have listed out specific work that ties to our goal of expanding dual-credit courses and expanding transitional math and English courses. We've always been working to elevate the diversity of our students participating in early college coursework. When you look at what we've laid out this year, that's going to be very specific to our education pathway, making sure that we bring diversity into that course. And then the area that has a significant amount of items listed is here in the Career Pathways tactic. And when I open that up, you're going to see a range of different activities that we are working on to align to our Introduction to Teaching Course that we are implementing this year. Mr. Spencer is working on further developing out our I- this year. Mr. Spencer is working on further developing out our IT pathway. We also want to support our students that attend our TCD program, ensuring that they are able to earn industry-recognized credentials. And also we want to, with course selection this year, we want to utilize those career pathways with our students for that course selection. And the last area is really in blended learning, continuing to look for opportunities for blended learning at our high schools.
This next strategy is critical for our work too. As we support learning acceleration and balanced assessment and all of our other strategies, we do need to develop a comprehensive system for professional learning. And some of the formalized work in that area is going to start with creating a vision for instructional coaching. So one of my goals this year is to engage all of the different positions that we have in the building that have some sort of coaching role so that we can come to a unified vision of what it means to offer coaching services in District 200. With the expansion and adoption of a new math and ELA curriculum, there will also be ongoing professional learning for teachers to support those adoptions. And then lastly, under the Develop the Professional Learning Program to Support New Staff Members, we will engage our WWEA to collaboratively come up with a high-quality mentorship program for teachers.
And the area of social emotional learning, you'll, you'll really see our entire work plan laid out there underneath the strategies. And so two, two really probably new pieces that I want to highlight first is under always our primary goal of making sure that all of our kids are connected to their schools. One thing that our, that our high schools are doing, we actually looked at all of our freshman students that were not engaged in a co-curricular, an activity, a sport, a club. We've taken that information and our leadership teams at the high school with their activity directors are actually taking and meeting with those groups of students to learn more about them, to connect with them, to make sure we're getting them connected in a club or an activity if they are not or have not been, or really trying to get a little bit more information on that area. We know that we have a lot of supports in place for our freshmen when they come to school. So we, we take seriously when we have freshmen that were not engaged in an activity or a club or a sport during that first year. And we see this as a process that will continue to duplicate. This is obviously in addition to the expansion of all the clubs and activities that we expanded last year as well. Another exciting piece underneath the strategies that are aligned with our SEL framework, and you'll see it highlighted as the first strategy, is to implement a search and referral system for our families and students that are in need of mental health services outside of the school setting. So certainly our jobs within schools is to make sure our kids have access to their academic programming, so that we're supporting our students. But there are many students that need much more than that. And so we're partnering with a group called Referral GPS. Referral GPS does a few things. They, they give us access and our community and our families access to a search system that can match them with the right insurance provider, match them with the right provider for the need of their child, for outside behavioral or mental health or substance abuse or substance use therapy. And then in addition, they'll also give our families priority access. So one of the things is, as our mental health providers are working with families, getting our kids access to, to care sometimes is a challenge because a lot of places are booked up. This group has provided relationships or developed relationships that will hopefully give some of our families priority. And they also navigate the case navigation piece with them as well. So we're excited about this. We're training all of our mental health folks in September on this. And we think it's going to be a great tool for our district. And then you'll see outlined underneath there a lot of our other pieces that are part of our SEL plan. And in addition, the last one, utilizing assessment and screening data. As you know, last year we used our Sabers tool, which is a part of our FastBridge suite. We're now doing that both at the elementary and middle school level for behavioral and academic information. So.
Jumping over to the operational excellence side of things, two strategies that kick things off. One being maintaining a strong fiscal health for the organization. So tactics within that is certainly presenting the board with a balanced budget on an annual basis. We've done that again in July. Plan on bringing you a balanced budget again next month, which would be the 13th year in a row that we've done so. We certainly with Dr. Kyle and his team, we have to align our financial and human, human resources needs to the overall strategic plan. We do certainly want to maintain our district's performance in key specific financial metric areas, and those were indicators that you saw on tab two. And then last but not least, on a daily basis, anytime we're entering into a contract with an outside vendor partner, that it's meeting our financial, operational, and academic core strategies. From the financial side of things, we move over to the facility side. This is a little bit more robust because we're doing a lot of work on an annual basis, including all of the work that happened here this summer that we're planning for the summer of 2023 and beyond. So areas that we'll look at is developing a plan for adding more innovative and flexible spaces that align with our Portrait of a Graduate throughout our district. We are in the process and have begun developing a plan that will address significant capital needs at three of our four middle schools. We certainly want to implement a capital facilities plan that's consistent with your Sherman Douglas policy. We've done that and continue to follow that on an annual basis. We've already begun implementing an elementary playground replacement plan. We have a playbook for that. We did two playgrounds this summer, two more playgrounds next summer, and that will continue through the summer of 2027. And then last but not least, and something you will hear about next month at your regular board meeting, is putting together a library learning center renovation plan that has a playbook specifically that we can execute in the same manner as we have begun doing so on the playground side of things.
In the area of our technology systems, we do, we do want to annually assess the stability of our infrastructure and our security. So if, as a reminder, the board did approve a, quite a substantial amount of money to upgrade our infrastructure for our network. That work will continue throughout this year. And then we will also look to still shore up some cybersecurity items this year as well. In the area of ensuring comprehensive data systems for staff, we really see two areas of need for this year. We have two very large systems that are used for data in our district. One is our Student Information System, Synergy, and one is our HR Business System, I-Visions. So what we are going to do this year is to look to innovate and get the most out of both of those systems and ensure that we are using them optimally. And with that also does come a new hire on our data systems team.
In the area of community engagement, so on the indicators tab, you will see, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, there are a couple of indicators listed for community engagement as well. And as you probably, you, you know, having served on the board, tracking data for success of community engagement is very difficult to do. And so one data point that we do have access to is social media. And so on a weekly basis, we maintain a digital communications tracking sheet where we track the number of followers, what posts, how far of reach we got on the various social media platforms, what's doing well so we can replicate that and continue to engage our community on social media, and then also through our district newsroom. And so there's, every 30 days, I will update the indicators tab so that you can see, so that we can all see how the progression of that. And we want to make sure that that number continues to grow. And so then here on the strategy side, you'll see our strategies listed on the Vision 2026, but then some goals that we have to maintain, at least 50 social media posts a month, posting regularly to our newsroom, in addition to, not listed up there, all of the activities and engagement opportunities we outlined in our annual community engagement plan. And then some tactics to continue maintaining active engagement with all of our municipalities. And then also the last one, you'll see conduct a communications audit to ensure that all District 200 stakeholders are being informed and engaged. And so the focus on that goal for the four-year plan is to this year spend a little bit of time researching some potential partners to help us in that. And so the thought is that this year we'll research some options for communication event audit partners with the goal of potentially doing that audit in the next school year.
Excellent. Next is actively recruit diverse pool of candidates. Working with individual teams at the building level. And every year this has been one of our goals. So we learn every year. Next is competitive wages. This late winter, early spring, we're going to start negotiating with the WWEA. We're also looking at reopening the CEA contract as well to be competitive. Proactively address staff shortages. If you click on that one, there are a couple of things that we are working on right now. We're working with our buildings to try and recruit anybody who's interested and willing and able to work in some of our buildings with our high-needs teacher system positions. Created an MOU so that we could outsource some positions, and that's been very helpful in staffing some of our areas of shortage. And then we added a stipend to be, to attract more outside and also internal candidates for areas that we're struggling to fill. The last two, grow your own teacher. I know Melissa talked about that a lot, but that kind of overlaps in both of our worlds. And then last, actively support dual credit certification for secondary teachers. That's going to go in with the negotiation we're going to have late winter and early spring.
Last section on the operational side then is the strategy focused on organizational culture. And again, three specific areas of focus. One being to continue to implement five essentials. That's an annual survey done through the state. And then the second being to continue to work collaboratively with our safety committee, our first responder group as, as we continue to revise, enhance those plans. Well, safety remains a priority area for us. So again, this, this outlines, highlights, I'm going to be clear, right? This doesn't capture all of the work that's getting done in the district across our schools or even at the, the district level, but just the areas where we've prioritized work for this year. Any of the tactical elements identified on here, you should expect as a board to see that come back to you at a board meeting. So you will see updates on all of these strategic elements throughout the year. You'll also notice on the left side, there's a little percentage slider. That's just a little accountability tool that we can use to ensure that we're completing the work that we've, we've set out to, to complete. So just to be really clear, that, that's just an internal tracking tool that helps us to communicate both with you and with our team as to whether we're, we're getting this work done. So again, I'm going to stop here. We're not asking the board for approval on any of the work plans this evening. Our, our practice has been that we bring it to you, certainly give you a month to look at this, to chew on it, to ask questions. If you think that there are specific strategies missing or tactics missing that you'd like for us to focus on, please do. Our intent would be to bring that back to you at the next meeting for you to approve.
Any questions or comments?
I have a quick question. So we're using, terminology question. So we're using objectives and strategies. And I'm just going to flip the computer around because I don't know how else to say it. So before we use this kind of dashboard-y thing, right, which I think we call them priorities, how do those relate? They're not related, are they? Are they the same document? Is intended to be the same thing?
Well, similar information, right? So the, what I would tell you is that on your strategic plan, we use the terminology of strategy and tactic, right? Those are the, the red items are the strategies in your strategic plan, blue items are the tactics. The work priorities are kind of the, the subbullets that you see, right? So that does align with kind of how you've seen it in, in the past. I think difference, the, the board was specifically interested this year in, in seeing very clear connection between both the, the metrics that we're monitoring and the strategy we're putting in place, and all of it connected to the strategic plan. So that was our, our effort was to tie all of this together under the umbrella of the plan. But that's how you would connect that to previous years. The work plans, the specific kind of work areas of focus are the subbullets under the, under the tactics.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. And I just, it's just a, so like what you have opened there, it doesn't matter which one it is. So where, that little blue circle where it says 0%?
Yeah.
How will that update?
We, we update it. We will update it as we're getting the work completed.
Okay. And then those, the ones underneath it, you said that's like your internal gauge? What were you saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that's exactly, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
The zero is a zero.
Okay.
Right? So that, that is not measuring like quality of the, the work completion. That's just our internal tracking tool to make sure that the, the work that we've set out to complete is getting done.
So is the, would the goal, because some of them didn't add up, is it like by the end of the year? Like, yeah, let's just take this one. You know, will that, that be 100%?
All of them will be complete by the end of the year. Some will be complete much sooner than the, the end of the year, right? It kind of depends on where it falls in the workflow.
Yeah. But there were definitely some further down that with like the playgrounds, because it listed the individual playgrounds, but those are years out. So that, those will just say blank, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
I just have two quick, a little more specific questions for Dr. Salagi. The first one you discussed in, so this isn't, first of all, Mr. Spencer, this is amazing. It's so user-friendly compared to what we had. So thank you very much. When I click, but Dr. Salagi, when I click on the strategies under Implement Social Emotional Learning Programming aligned with our SEL framework, I'm not sure why one of the strategies is developing math growth mindset in staff and students in the area of mathematics?
You're, I couldn't fully, you're not sure why that's a strategy or what was the question? I'm sorry.
You're asking why it's a strategy under SEL?
Correct.
Yeah. She's asking why, why SEL has a, has a strategy item tied to a curricular area like math?
Got it. Okay. I mean, really, probably a few answers to that. One, the purpose for SEL existing, twofold, to ensure the emotional wellbeing of our kids, but two, to improve learning, right? So there's a lot of correlation between how we believe that kids can learn at high levels and how when kids have a high level of belief in themselves, it ties to outcomes and performance, right?
Okay. I guess I'm just confused why, you know, perhaps that's the education side of it, why, why math?
Why, why math?
Why math?
Yeah, twofold. Well, and I will also just, the last part of that is mindset's a part of our SEL framework, right? There's a strong correlation in our social emotional learning piece to mindset. Why math? One, we're in a math implementation this year at the elementary level, right? And there's also significant research out there on math mindsets, right? So there's, we're never going to take on a strategy, right, where there's not a corollary to improving learning or improving wellness. In this case, we have a high improvement rate in learning for students when we do and take out things that we've put together in our math mindsets piece. And we, certainly some we can dive deeper into, but that's really the reason why it exists. There's a correlation to our SEL framework, and it exists to improve learning. And then why math? Because we're, we revamped our math curriculum. This supports the professional learning that's already taking place that Mrs. Murphy is doing in that space as well.
Okay. Thank you. And the second one for you. I do feel it's difficult to hear tonight.
It's okay.
When you say that we are meeting with freshman students who do not have a connection with an extracurricular activity, I'm just curious who's meeting with the students? Is it the counselors? Is it the, the social work staff? Like who's meeting with them?
Yeah. So it's our, it will be our sophomore students because it would have been our, our freshman students that were not.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah. And mainly it will be our activity directors that will be taking that lead at our high schools, right? Now, depending on who the student may be, there may be a different adult identified depending on who the student is. For, but the leaders of that activity and taking them within groups will be our activity directors at the high schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
One, one question, one comment. Do we have the ability to add in, drill down to presentations that have been given at the board meetings? There was just a public comment earlier tonight about the fact that we've not talked at all about recovering academically from the, from the pandemic. And I think, feel like we've talked about learning acceleration about a dozen times since then. So just the ability to drill in and see former presentations that have been given to the board, I think that would be helpful.
Um, there is within the- There is within, like any community member can go in under your...
Would we be able to do that from this dashboard? To see individual presentations that relate to metrics that are on there?
We'll have to look at that, yeah.
And then the comment was, honestly, I can't read the whole strategy section from here. I can't see any of the text, so I can't really provide any input. I'll look at it. It all sounded good, but I couldn't follow it. It's really hard to see from this direction.
Yeah, that's why we opened in front of you, Brad, sorry.
Is that what this thing is?
No, 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 on your computer.
Okay. But this was the, I'll provide feedback the next time. I had a hard time following, following the conversation when I can't see everything we're looking at.
Other questions or comments?
I think it's extremely user-friendly. I feel like, you know, I, throughout the entire presentation, I clicked between indicators, and then I went, you know, through the strategies and clicked on all the little i's. And I mean, there is so much information out here for anybody to kind of really get a, you know, if they're wanting to zero in on something specific, or they're just wanting to get an overview, I think it's, I think it's a great tool that we can, you know, I think the big thing is going to be, how do we get this information out to the community so that they want to look at this, and they want to absorb and learn more? So I think that's key in terms of how we message it and get it out there as well, so. Anything else? Okay, thank you. And moving on, written reports attached to the agenda, where the monthly financial reports, the FOIA reports, the board communication log, board committee reports, the committee notes from the board, community engagement committee were attached to the board agenda. Is there any additional information in regard to that? I think we heard a little bit from our members before. Are there any other reports from board members? Okay, topics for future discussion, the 2022-2023 budget. Next regular board meeting is September 14th, 2022. Edison Middle School are taking it on the road again. Glad to be back in the schools. Announcement, September 28th, 2022 Committee of the Whole will be at the School Service Center. There being no further action to come before the board, an open session, I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hoes, meeting is adjourned.